Open School Committee meeting. First, we'll pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Constitution and of all its laws.
I would like to ask in the audience if anyone is recording or videotaping this meeting. Seeing nobody raising their hand, I guess they're not. Thank you. Now I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item, we are honored to have some pretty impressive guests with us this evening. As reported to you at a previous meeting, the students from the advanced placement, the AP government class at Auburn High School competed in the We the People event down at Harvard University on January 25th. And we, as you know, they won the state finals and actually will travel to Washington DC to represent all of Massachusetts, which is a tremendous honor, not only for all of you that you earned, but something that we get to all bask in the glow of as well as the Auburn school community and certainly your parents in the community. So I've invited tonight the two history teachers, the AP gov teachers, Mr. Benaccio and Mr. Canard, who also serve as the We the People advisors. So with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to them. They can tell you a little bit about this program, the exciting next steps. And then we also have two teams of students who are going to actually present to you what they did in terms of their presentation. They're simulated congressional hearings down in Harvard, and I am certain that you will be impressed, as impressed as I was there. The parents who are here who were there, and Mrs. Gribbins' son also participates in this as well. So Mr. Benaccio or Mr. Canard?
Mr. Chair, I need to record myself.
Yes, okay, let's.
So thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Spencer Canard and I teach high school history at Auburn High School.
And my name is Vince Benaccio, and I do the same.
And we're very proud to introduce our We the People students to you tonight. We're going to introduce them with a quick two-minute video that was featured on NECN about a week and a half ago. And to really just echo the comments that Dr. Brunel made with, you know, being this an entire effort of the Auburn public schools, you know, although we get to have them as seniors, they're building off the skills that they've learned since kindergarten and even in preschool. So it's really just, really a community effort. So I'd like to make that, you know, just a statement before we begin. We just could not be more proud of them. So I'll go ahead and play the video now.
This is a loud echo sound. It's one of the microphones.
Light switch behind.
It's not a typical high school history class.
Everybody works together and they all know what they're doing. And if anybody's having trouble with another person, we'll pick them up and help them out with these kids.
Auburn High's AP government students spent months practicing for a statewide competition called We the People, The Citizen, and the Constitution. It's a simulated congressional hearing. Students present speeches and answer questions from a panel of judges who posed as United States congressional members.
In which they would answer questions ranging from the philosophical foundations of the Constitution to modern issues facing America.
Last weekend, the class of 35 beat seven other schools at Harvard University. At the end of April, they'll represent Massachusetts at the national finals in Washington DC.
The credit really goes to the students, and we just could not be more proud of them and how hard they worked.
And days that we had, snow days, I mean, they were meeting at each other's houses and practicing. I mean, we had students stay up there on school on Fridays.
Auburn has participated in the competition for the last four years. This is the first time they won the state finals. Students call the chance to go to the nation's capital once in a lifetime. They say the experience has made them more informed.
Going into like the real world now, like I feel good, I can feel good, I can vote, like I know about issues, a lot more than like most people do.
But to get to DC, they'll need the public's help. They have to raise about $47,000 to cover the cost. To help, people can contact the school.
And this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for them to represent our state at the national level. It truly is an honor.
Just for us to go down to Washington and like be a part of that experience, I think it gives like a good name for Auburn, like just to represent them.
Mike Cronin, Worcester News Tonight.
So just, just a quick background. Vincent and I started teaching this class about four years ago, and every year we've seen progression in our students from finishing, you know, towards the end of the pack to really finishing towards, you know, first place. And, you know, every year there have been slow increments towards achieving our goal. And I keep recalling the story of when they actually called us when we won. And our goal was to place, so place in the top three. And they called third place, and I was like, okay, okay, well, we didn't get that. They called second place, and I was like, well, you know, it's nothing we did wrong. The other schools just weren't that much better. And then they called us for first place, and it was just like, oh my goodness. So really just the, how far we've come and how hard these students have worked, it's just, it is absolutely amazing. And, you know, to see the products that they're able to present to you tonight, I think you will also be as impressed and as proud as both Vinny and I are. So, yeah, I think what we'll do is I'll, I'll go ahead and read the question. It'll be a little funky because normally they're sitting down at a desk and they're also, you know, projecting. So hopefully we'll be able to work it with the microphone, and so bear with us for just a second.
Sure.
So, just to tell you again, so like they've prepared these speeches that they've been working on for quite some time. So they'll read it to you, and they're going to be done typically in four minutes. If we had time, which we don't, you could actually ask them questions about it and hopefully they're on task to, you know, give you answers, which was probably actually the most impressive thing, is their ability to really think on their feet and answer some incredibly detailed questions that most people can't answer. So again, excellent work. All right. So we'll have the students introduce themselves, and then I'll read the question, and then our students will begin their speeches. So our first unit is going to be Unit 4.
My name is Jamie Martin.
Excuse me, sorry.
My name's Elise Kavanaugh.
My name's Lily McPherson.
My name is Terry Carlson.
Kyle Quidamo.
And I'm Nicole Gabasky.
So the focus of Unit 4 is how the values and principles invited in the Constitution has shaped the American institution and practices. And they've chosen question one to read to you tonight. So they have prepared three speeches, so we're going to do the first question. So question one reads, "evaluate the arguments in Federalist 62 that the United States needs both a House of Representatives and a Senate because single large assemblies have the prosperity yield to impulsive sudden violent passions and seduced by factious leaders to intemperpernacious resolutions." The first sub-bullet reads, "Why do you think the Constitution provides that all bills for raising revenues shall originate in the House of Representatives and that the House shall have the sole power of impeachment?" And the second sub-bullet reads, "In your opinion, has the Senate properly used or has it abused its power to review treaties and confirm nominations? And then what evidence can you offer to support your positions?" So you guys can start whenever you're ready.
Well, our current Congress has earned the unwanted title of a do-nothing Congress that seems to be only good at renaming post offices. One could argue that because of its bicameral nature, current trends that might not have the nation's best interests in mind can be checked. When the Federalists were arguing for a bicameral legislator, they were advocating for a system that would insulate the federal government not only from the divisive effects of factionalism, but also from regional trends and concerns that would impact the entire nation.
The writings in Federalist 62 could be construed as prophetic, as Madison's concerns have been realized consistently throughout our history. Whether it was the political divisions plaguing the Wilson administration during the First World War, or the current 113th do-nothing Congress, the bicameral structure of Congress has done its best to protect the integrity of the Constitution.
In theory, our system of government should prevent a single group from wielding excessive power through a strong system of checks and balances. Under the Articles of Confederation, the United States utilized an ineffective and unchecked unicameral legislature.
James Madison and Federalist 62 correctly advocated for a bicameral legislator to be present in the new Constitution. While the House of Representatives would best reflect the wishes of the people, Madison argued in Federalist 62 that the House was subject to breeding factions and impulsive decisions. Thus, the Senate would not only check the House, but also provide stability while reviewing legislation.
By promoting a bicameral legislator, Madison used checks and balances to negate the destructive effects of a unicameral system, a benefit we still feel today.
Discontent over the Affordable Care Act catapulted the Republican Party to regain control of the House in the 2010 midterm elections with aid from the disproportionately influential minority Tea Party. The Tea Party, which 19% of Americans align themselves with, focuses on decreasing the national debt by reducing federal taxes and spending.
Tea Party members contributed to the government shutdown this past year because they promised if they were elected into office, they wouldn't raise the taxes on their supporters. Although they captured their promise, it resulted in even more problems within the country.
In a unicameral system, factions like the Tea Party would not be checked by the Senate. This would result in people like Congressman Stephen King having more influence on legislation. It was Stephen King who classified people who would benefit from the Dream Act as either valedictorians or drug mules when he stated...
For everyone who's a valedictorian, there's a hundred more out there hauling marijuana across the desert.
If Representative King and the Tea Party convinced the House to pass an outrageous piece of legislation, the Senate would be able to veto. Throughout history, the bicameral legislature has proven to work.
In Congress, both Houses share equal responsibility in the government and work together to check each other's powers. In Article 1, Section 7, the Constitution states that all bills for raising revenue shall originate from the House, which has the greatest representation of the American people. The Senate checks the House with its authority to amend proposed bills.
Recently Congressman Mark Meadows stated...
James Madison wrote in Federalist 58 that the power over the purse may be regarded as the most complete and effectual weapon for obtaining a redress of every grievance.
He indicates how he intends to use the House's power over revenue as a means to impede on the President's agenda, to provide a check on the executive branch. The House has an additional check on the President. It's the power of impeachment. The maximum punishment for impeachment is removal from office, as stated in Article 1, Section 3 of the United States Constitution.
Although it can almost always be argued that an authoritative administration may be corrupt or abusive, the Senate, for the most part, has properly utilized its power to review treaties and confirm nominations.
Out of all 158 people ever nominated to the Supreme Court, the Senate has only formally rejected 12 nominees. And out of the thousands of treaties proposed, the Senate has only formally rejected 22. This small portion of rejections indicates that the Senate does not generally abuse its power.
Senate Democrats would disagree with this assertion that an abuse of power is not prominent as it claimed that Republicans have been abusing the power of the filibuster to obstruct the confirmation of nominations. They feel so strongly about this that they are willing to stonewall the Senate to go nuclear with the majority vote rule change.
While the design of our government theoretically should prevent the abuse of power, there are numerous instances where the Senate reflects an anti-democratic structure. Journalist Jeffrey Toobin references Noah Feldman, a Harvard Law School professor, who suggests that.
The Senate is an institution that stops change. That's how it's designed, and that is always going to hurt the party that wants change.
According to Toobin, challenges to civil rights for legislation and healthcare reform simply reflect how the system works for better or worse.
All right, so, all right, so, hope you enjoyed that. This will be Unit 2, that really focused on, well, how was the Constitution actually created? So they're going to introduce themselves, and I'll read the question, and they'll go.
My name's Alexis Rojai.
My name is Claire Hutner.
My name is Catherine Johnson.
My name is Liam Gribbins.
My name is Richard Fain.
My name is Jamie Vera.
Before we continue, so Mr. Canard mentioned that they had to prepare three speeches. Now, when they reach, when they get to the competition, they don't know which questions are going to be asked. So they have to be, memorize each three speeches and be well-versed in the background of these speeches for the follow-up questions. So nothing was really guaranteed, so again, speaks volumes of their preparations. So I'm going to be reading question 2. And question 2 read, "The Articles of Confederation were the first of two blueprints for United States government. Although the Articles had serious weaknesses, government under the Articles should be credited for some important achievements. What were the major defects of the Articles and why did they impede the development of a national government?" And the sub-questions were, "What were the major achievements of the government under the Articles? In what ways, if any, are the weaknesses of the Articles comparable to the weaknesses of the United Nations and/or the European Union?"
Okay, so.
Divided country.
No infrastructure.
Non-existent military unable to defend the nation.
Small powerless government.
These, along with others, would be the characteristics of the United States under the Articles of Confederation. The newfound country, having declared their independence but still fighting for their freedom, needed to establish a centralized government in order to keep the states together. Originally, the founders placed their ideas for America's future in the Articles of Confederation, that was unanimously ratified. These Articles, written one short year after the United States became independent, were therefore vague, abrupt, and lacking the essential powers needed for a federal government to be successful. Despite the major defects of the Articles, there were major achievements under this US government, the ideas that would be kept and expanded upon.
During ye time, the idea of a strong central government was feared. The Articles of Confederation were created with several limits to the central government and granting them some specific powers, but left most of the power for the states to govern themselves. In Article 9, it stated that Congress had the ability to administer finance, deal with foreign relations, make treaties, and control military affairs, including declaring war. All of these capabilities were later turned into cabinet departments of Treasury, State, and War.
Perhaps the single most significant event that the Articles forged was the Northwest Ordinance of 1787. This defined the Northwest Territory and planned its government, and set the precedent for the process of territories entering statehood. It also promised that new states would be treated the same as previously established states. Most importantly, the ordinance prohibited slavery from the new states and required them to set aside their schools. The Articles gave Congress control over these regulations for the Northwest Territory, giving them more strength as a federal government.
Numerous problems existed in the Articles of Confederation, many of which contributed to its failure. The national government could not force the states to obey any of its laws. The lack of a common national currency made it difficult for the federal government to create an army or of other powers such as taxing because the states did not rely on a national standard.
Making revolutionary war debts difficult to pay off.
Along with this, Congress's inability to control interstate and foreign commerce made controlling an unestablished country difficult. The tipping point that determined the end of the Articles was Shea's Rebellion. Since the central government could not tax the citizens, they did not have money to reimburse war veterans for their duties, which led to the uprising. Along with this, the national government lacked a unified army to extinguish the rebellion.
The branches of government were none their issue under the Articles. The executive branch did not exist as the emphasis on state leaders was more important to the nation. Without executive branch, acts of Congress could not be enforced. The national court system was non-existent, making the rights of citizens unprotected and presidents unestablished. With a unicameral Congress and less representation, the people were not held responsible to Congress, or rather the states. In order for laws to pass, nine of the 13 states needed to agree. The issue with the immense amount of state power given is that each state was very different. They identified themselves as independent entities, seldomly agreed on anything, making it difficult for legislation to pass. These problems can also be seen in more modern confederacies. The United Nations and the European Union are the two of the most important international alliances in the world. Both represent a crew confederacy, proving themselves to be more of a brotherhood than one massive supernation. The European Union and the United Nations both share common disadvantages with the Articles of Confederation. The reason most individuals cannot identify the President of these two coalitions is because they hold very little power and are not represented as leaders. The Articles of Confederation, on the other hand, had no executive branch. Without a strong individual leading the confederacy, most of the power fell into the hands of the legislator, creating an unequal balance of power.
Another similarity is the implication of a general assembly. Though this may seem like an effective strategy to get things resolved, it was a breeding ground for disagreements and debates. The countries and states only have the power to make recommendations and none have the power to make any real decisions without the approval from others.
Similar to early American government, the Articles of Confederation came with their fair share of flaws. These flaws, however, assisted in creating the United States Constitution, as well as an even stronger nation. While it may have failed in the end, it succeeded in keeping the newly independent states united in such a chaotic time.
So, as, you know, we can see, it is a fairly impressive product, and they worked, you know, countless hours on these speeches. And so I really thank you guys for letting us present them, because not everyone knows what it is to simulate a congressional hearing. The classes by Auburn Standard is still new, it's only been around for four years. So we do appreciate the time that you've given us and for our students as well. And great job, guys.
Great, wonderful job.
Does anyone have any questions about it, or?
I'm overwhelmed. I'm just, I'm just, I, you know, I was impressed with the vocabulary and the depth of their, of their, you know, convictions and, yeah, I'm just, I'm just speechless. Thank you guys for coming and presenting, because I really had no idea of the, you know, the intensity of it. Great job.
Thank you. And everything they said was like really of their own opinions, you know, and that was the biggest thing we told them. You know, write what you believe in, and when you start interacting with these judges, it'll come off as that more truthful and convincing, I suppose. So they've developed their own opinions, which is, I think is exactly the point that we're, we're going for further scores, is to make them citizens who can think for themselves.
George?
Yeah, I just want to say what a fantastic presentation, and the way that you present yourselves as young adults, you make us very proud. And I want to thank you, thank you gentlemen, for bringing them to this point, and wish you all lots of luck. And my only question is, do you have to do any more preparation, or will it be a review of what's gotten you this far?
Yeah, we've...
Great question.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to get back into prep mode tomorrow, well...
Friday.
Friday, I guess, depending on, depending on what their nature is.
No pressure.
Yeah. We'll leave that alone. We, yeah, there's like a set of national questions that each, each school in the 50 states will have to do, so it'll be different from there. The themes will be the same, but the gravity of the questions will be a little more in-depth, so to speak. So it'll be a lot more for them to do. But we have, we have plenty of time, and, you know, we believe they're going to do great.
Well, as far as we're concerned, you're already winners, so whatever your place when you get there, you know, that's just the icing on the cake. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
And I would just like to say I'm very, very proud of all of you for doing what you're doing, and it just shows you how good of a school system we have in Auburn and how our students really work to get to move things forward. And you guys just ought to be so proud of yourself, and as a school committee person, I am very, very proud of what the presentation you people did tonight was outstanding. I mean, even I sat here and learned things listening to you. And that's what it's all about, it's working together, and you can see it through you, through the students, and you did unbelievably good. I don't know what else to say, you just were great.
Thank you. We've, we've had like, it's quite common for the two of us to get emails from former students who've gone through this and say that they're much more prepared to, you know, for college, they're ahead of their other kids, and we'll let parents get in touch with them and say this is probably one of the more important things that has happened to the town and the school, for sure.
I agree.
And especially in terms of just being a citizen, and all of these students, I mean, when they turn 18 in our class, we give them a voter registration form, you know, they're excited to go out and vote, they're informed about the decisions. When I was talking to the Board of Selectmen on Monday night, I was saying how, and to the parents last night, I was saying how, you know, sometimes Vinny and I will stay out, you know, before we go into the class, and we'll actually be bickering with each other about issues. And for government teachers, like, you know, nothing could make us more happy, and they're informed, and it's great to hear them reflect on where they started at the beginning of the year, looking at, you know, they had opinions, but they didn't necessarily know maybe why they had those opinions, or they didn't know how to back it up with, with the Bill of Rights, or the Constitution, or the Declaration of Independence said, or Supreme Court cases for that matter. And now they're able to channel all that information, and, you know, a lot of them will tell, be the first to tell you that when they get into conversations with their friends, they're much more advanced in being able to not only hold their own opinion, but also probably convince their friends of their opinion as well, which is pretty fantastic. So the citizen aspect of the class is just, I mean, it just, it just speaks wonders.
Mary Ellen?
So two things, support from the committee. One, later in this meeting, you'll actually see transfers that Mr. Gray and I are recommending to be able to support. As indicated earlier, it's going to cost about $47,000 for these students and their, and their peers to go down. So we're going to recommend transfers that will allow the school's budget to support $3,500 towards that, which is basically $100 per student. There's 35 of them that will go. Also, although we don't have the paperwork completed for tonight, just because it's so new and some of the details are being finalized, would seek your support in allowing Mr. Canard and Mr. Benaccio to move forward in the planning for this. The trip is from April 25th to the 28th, I believe, or 29th?
I believe it's the 29th.
To the 29th, okay.
With the Tuesday being the travel day, going back to school.
Right, okay, so the 25th through the 29th, they'll come back at the March 12th meeting with the finalized paperwork. But if those were things you'd be willing to state your support for, it would allow them to continue, continue to go forward, and we certainly want our students to have as much prep time as possible.
I'll make a recommendation to, you know, have the, continue moving forward with the plan.
Great.
Thank you, and we'll get, we'll get you that information as, as a cop said.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Great.
Do we want to do the transfer now, or later?
It's actually part of all of the transfers, so there's a whole number of them, but my suspicion is they'll be supported, so. That's great.
And also, if the community would like to support us as well, we have donation letters that are, that we have already created, and we have action plans of the students going out, and they can certainly make donations, checks payable to Auburn High School, which is 99 Auburn Street in Auburn, Massachusetts, 01501. Or they may call the, the school 508-832-7711. When going through, the community's already been extremely generous, and we appreciate anything that the community's able to give us. And going forward too, we'll be, as part of our action plan, looking at businesses and really giving businesses recognition for being sponsors of our program. So that's, that's kind of our next phase. And again, we appreciate the publicity that we've been given tonight, we really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great job. No, if there's no school tomorrow, you'll be home practicing?
At each, at each other's house.
Okay. Great, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Give him a minute, will you?
Okay, sure.
So Kyle, how are you, the first one on camera? Did you jump right in front of him when you saw him?
I was just sitting there and not...
He was punching other kids out of the way.
I bet.
As Mr. Canard and Mr. Benaccio said, that was tremendously impressive when they gave their speeches, but then when the judges could ask any question they want, and they would cite not only historical evidence, but contemporary evidence, it just, it was really amazing, it was really. You guys did a great job. And of course, I had two school committee representatives too. Another great piece of news to share with you, we had numerous artists at Auburn High School. Amanda Helsdorf, the art teacher, made us aware that Anissa Shazai, one of her students, has been awarded the Silver Key in the Boston Scholastic Art and Writing Awards in the printmaking category, with Renee Fleming winning an honorable mention for her entry in the senior portfolio category. Additionally, there were other students who were recognized and had their artwork displayed at Anna Maria College, the art exhibit. Sam Albanese, Renee Fleming, Caitlin Chesna, Megan Johnson, Katie Falkingren, Sarah Houston, and Anissa Shazai. They had a reception that was held at the college on January 28th, and Sarah Houston was awarded first place in the mixed media category. So I recognize all of these students for their artistic talents and another great job by Auburn students too. The next item, the Mass Math and Science Initiative, the MEMZI program that we've been involved now, this is our second year, next year will be our third. That is the program that allows for us to have really expanded. Actually, we had less than 100 the first year, 200 or so the second, and nearly 400 this year in our AP enrollments. So this is a recommendation for you to support the same value last year of $15,000 towards this. What we get in return, in terms of teacher training, support for the Saturday sessions, materials and whatnot, is triple that amount. So it is my recommendation that you support our continued participation in this program.
Would you like a vote on that?
I would, yes, please.
Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve Auburn High School continued participation in the MEMZI program for the 2014-2015 school year at a cost of $15,000 to the district.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Great. The irrigation system, Auburn Youth Soccer had installed an irrigation system on the back fields out here that have been used by Auburn Youth Soccer for a number of years. With this field to be relocated due to the new middle school, they have donated that irrigation system, and we plan to put it at 10 Swanson Road, the current Auburn Middle School facility to be used for soccer there. So it is my recommendation you accept this, and we appreciate this generous donation[1793.76] this. And we appreciate this generous donation from Auburn Youth Soccer.
Get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation of an irrigation system for the soccer field at 10 Swanson Road from the Auburn Youth Soccer Organization.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Mary, it's wonderful. Mary D. Stone was recently notified that they've been selected as the 2014-2015 Adopt a School Program. The partnership provides a $500 donation, a one-year BJ's Business Membership, and they also do some collaboration throughout the year. So, it is my recommendation that you support this donation.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to gratefully accept the donation from BJ's Wholesale Club in the amount of $500 to Mary D. Stone's school.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Next, as you know, Mr. Giadano will be retiring at the end of this school year. So, we are assembling, Mr. Gagnon is assembling a middle school principal search, assistant principal search committee. So, if there is a member of the school committee who would like to serve on this, we would welcome your participation.
Through the chair, if there's nobody else, I'd be interested. But if somebody else wants to do it, I'm fine with that.
I'll make a motion.
And what was that motion?
I'll make a motion to nominate you for that position, to serve on the Assistant Principal Search Committee for Auburn Public Schools.
You know, I second. I have to say that we joke around, but that's an honor to do that in some ways, too, according. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
None.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Great. The next item to make you aware of, the, as part of the educator evaluation system, the legis, when this was first approved by the Board of Education, it always was intended to include surveys that students would complete on their teachers and teachers would complete on their principals. Auburn is participating in this pilot project. And the reason for that is we really wanted to be on the ground floor of seeing what these questions are and providing direct feedback to DESI to hopefully have positive changes made, if needed, to these before they go into full implementation next year. So, I just wanted to make you aware and to thank our teachers for participating in this, our principals, as well as our students. It's an exciting opportunity to get in on the ground floor for this process. Additionally, the SEI, the Sheltered English Immersion Endorsement, that is an expectation that all teachers, prior to being recertified in 2016, need to complete this SEI endorsement course. And it can range from 15 hours for administrators up to a maximum of 45 hours for educators. And it all depends on how many ELL, English Language Learner, category trainings they had previously. All of the administrators, including myself and Dr. Lozé, all of the principals as well, are participating in the administrative course currently. As you know, we trained a teacher in our district, Mrs. Gore, another member of the History Department. And she's providing this at Auburn High School. There are administrators from across central Mass that are participating. And we also have teachers who participated and continue to in the full-year course, as well as what they term the short and long bridge. So, just wanted to make you aware that that is ongoing, that people are doing on top of their regular duties that they need. Mr. Bouvier was here earlier. Happy to report, as I did to you in the fall, that there will be another intern from QCC, Quinsigamun Community College, devoting time, which is great. It's 140 hours that Felipe must complete. And we get those hours for free, and it really does help support. If you remember, we had two students this fall, so we are excited to have him aboard our team for the spring. And it comes at no cost, so a great cost-saving measure for us, too. We were recently notified, the Auburn Cultural Council awards grants on an annual basis. And we have some that were awarded to Auburn. In total, there was $13,353 that was submitted, and grants totaling $4,443 were actually awarded. Auburn, each community has an allocation. Wanted to recognize Tammy Bailey. She's a social studies teacher at Auburn Middle School. She was awarded a grant she plans to use at, she teaches 7th grade this spring, as part of her study on ancient India. And also, Mrs. Young, Jess Young, an Auburn Middle School 8th grade English teacher, she also was awarded a grant, and that's being used for a field trip to Hanover Theater to see a chamber production of short plays from literary fiction. So, kudos to both of them for taking the initiative to write grants, as well as those who weren't awarded, because it provides some extra opportunities for our kids at no cost to us. The next item, the Edavow newsletter, I just wanted to share this with you. This is a newsletter that is distributed across the Commonwealth regarding educator evaluation and its implementation. And this one, it was actually the December issue, highlighted the work in the Auburn Public Schools around the DDMs, the District Determined Measures. And it really is a tribute to the Edavow team members, the leadership team, and all of the teachers who are working through this, because these are new processes that we are embracing. And with change comes some anxiety, but everyone has really embraced the mission that we went into this with, is that if ultimately we have more and more in-depth conversations around teaching and learning, it's a good thing. And that's really what our focus remains. So, I give kudos to everybody involved here in Auburn in this great work. The next item is the Chapter 222 of the Acts of 2012, which I've provided information for you on previous occasions. And it reads an act relative to student access to educational services and exclusion from school. This act is set to go into effect on July 1st of 2014. So, I did provide some information in the packet that has come out from DESI regarding this. There is a public comment period that is open. I believe it's for 60-day period. So, if you had any, you don't have to take it up tonight, but would need to at the next meeting. If you have any comment that you would like made regarding this, the public comment period, no, actually, I would need to hear it tonight. It's through March 7th. I thought it was the 25th. That's when they'll take final action. So, if there are any comments that you'd like shared, I would be happy to note those. We have, if you'll recall, shared information previously around this and the committee's concern about the unfunded mandate that this puts in place. And that has been echoed by others as well, including the State Auditor, Suzanne Bump.
Through the chair, if I may?
Yep.
Dr. Benatiu, I've got a question regarding, in the document, it's got these three common misconceptions. And the first two are pretty, okay, but the third one, I'm not quite sure I understand it. Because it's saying that, you know, the misconception is that the legislation requires every school to develop a separate educational program for suspended students. So, but that is what this is all about. So, I don't understand what the misconception is there. I'm confused.
Where are you, Mrs. Gibby? Just sort of...
It's the end. It's the very last...
Oh, I'm sorry. Turn it around. Okay.
It's the very last page of the document.
Okay.
There's a listing of three misconceptions. And I'm questioning the third one. Because I guess I'm, they're saying that's the misconception, but that's what this is all about. So, I guess I'm confused. Do you understand why they're calling it a misconception?
So, I think what they're saying here, I think it's a little bit of a play on words I would offer to you. Because, so, the legislation requires that every school, so the legislation does not require that every school has to create a separate alternative education program. So, we don't have to have a full program in place. However, if you look on the 2, 4, 5th line down, the legislation states that a school-wide education service plan may include tutoring, alternative placements, Saturday school, and online or distance learning. So, I think what they're saying there is that we may not have to have a full-fledged, separate program within our district. But we do need to have students continue their education. So, we can do that in a number of ways. We can have them get tutoring, which would come at a cost. We could have them attend alternative placements that would come at a cost, to participate in online or distance learning. All of it comes at a cost. But it could be, I think this is really looking at it more of a buffet model, as opposed to having a full program. But we're still required to have them continue their education.
Yeah, it's saying, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but it's saying it does not require schools to provide these services. Yes, it is requiring us to do this.
It absolutely is requiring us to do that, unless it is for weapons or drug violations.
Sure, yeah.
But it absolutely is. I think, I think the distinction they're trying to make is, we don't have to create a whole program. We can pick and choose different programs that are out there, all of which will come at a cost.
That is so bad. So, what are the chances that expulsions will go down?
You know, I think that for drug and weapons violations, there'll be absolute, and this is not intended for that, there'll be absolutely no change in those. I think, you know, the impetus behind this is to try and come up with alternate consequences for students to keep them in school. I don't think any of us would argue that when students aren't in school, the likelihood of them returning and fully engaging and graduating all go down. Having said that, we have to keep that balance of maintaining a safe and appropriate educational environment for all of the students that are there. So, there are times when students' behavior requires a consequence that removes them from their peers. So, I understand the reasoning behind it. The challenge of it is, there is a definite cost that is attached to this. And the State Auditor has said that as well. So, where, or if they're gonna come up with money for that, that has yet to be seen or determined.
And this is going into effect in July. There's no ifs, ands, nor's about.
That is how the legislation was written. I don't know if perhaps, based on public comment that's received through March 7th, if that would change it. But it is on the Board of Education's, it is their intention to vote it on March 25th. They could vote to delay it, I suppose. But it reads here that final action is required, it was anticipated on March 25th.
I mean, I think we, as a committee, have already...
You have expressed.
Set our piece and have sent our written concerns and everything. I'm not quite sure there's any more we can do, but, yeah, this is, this is a lot.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So, that's some not-so, oh, sorry.
No, I was thinking we're going on to unfinished business. That's why.
Okay.
Are we? Okay. I was just wondering if we wanted to do student, the student...
Representative, Mr. Boy.
The reports from the students.
Yes. I was gonna bring that up at the end, but that's fine. Now is good. You think you're gonna get away with it, didn't you?
Yeah, because we've got minutes, too.
Yeah, we got the minutes.
Considering there's not gonna be a snow day tomorrow, and they're gonna go home.
We don't get double.
All right. Well, earlier this month, the students from Beijing shadowed some Auburn High students. And it was just, it was a unique experience, because I know I'm still emailing mine. And they were actually quite young, and their English was very good. My student was named Wenchi, but his name, he's actually only 13 years old, and this was his first time coming into the United States.
Wow.
And he spoke English very well. And secondly, Molly Nguyen, this past weekend, competed at MIT in Cambridge. There were 10 students, and our chaperones were Ms. Bazinet and Mr. Benatiu, whom you just met. And it was a very interesting experience. My committee was the IAEA, and we were discussing the future of nuclear energy and the non-floriferation treaty. So, really, really exciting stuff.
So, in the beginning of the year, I talked about the new reusable water bubbler that was done, how they had like 200. And I went up to it today, because I wanted to do, see how, where we're at. And we're at over like 4,500 bottles reused in the water, which was kind of outstanding, thinking of how much plastic being saved and how many people use it a lot. So, it's good. So, I want to talk about how the boys' winter track team came in, placed in second in districts last Saturday at Fitchburg High School. They lost to Douglas by like nine points.
Mr. Quiddam is a key member of that team, right?
Yeah.
He may not tell you that, but he is.
The first meeting from Mr. Auburn, Auburn, which was the competition that takes place every year for Auburn juniors and seniors to show their talents today. Started up last week, and I believe practices will start sometime after February vacation is over. Finally, the senior night for the girls and boys' basketball is tomorrow night, and they'll host Tantasma. And I also know at the game Relay for Life is doing a purple out to support Relay for Life that night.
Thank you. Any, anybody have any questions for them?
I have a question. How come you couldn't make up those nine points?
We got disqualified in the four-by-two on a bogus officiating call. It was controversial.
It's always them officiators, isn't it?
It was controversial at the time, but even my mom, who like just sat down in the bleachers, and no one knew she was from Auburn, when it happened, it was us and Whitemsville Christian who were happening. They all said, oh, Whitemsville Christian has to be disqualified from this. And then it turned out that we disqualified, which obviously, we would've gained, I think, eight points. Because we still were lost by one, but we would have more of a competitive edge going into our last event if we knew.
I think it's less painful to lose by nine than to lose by one.
Good job, I know.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Like to get a motion for the regular session minutes for January 22nd, 2014?
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I got one abstention. George.
So, it's some excellent, more excellent news to share with you, exciting news. As you know, the high school presented an innovation grant regarding their freshman academy, 21st Century Skills, and was awarded that grant. We were recently notified. So, the $10,000 is used for a planning grant. And Mr. Handfield and his team are working diligently to put this together. And they'll actually return on the March 12th school committee meeting to share with you some more details around the whole freshman academy. So, kudos to Mr. Handfield and his team. This, if you remember, was the same grant that the middle school received for the STEM Academy a couple of years ago. So, great, great news for Auburn again. The bus application form, just as a reminder, has been posted. It went out in an email notification today, as it did a couple of weeks ago. The fees are the same, $100 per student, maximum of $250 per family. With any late applications, regardless of whether a family needs to pay or not, is assessed $50, and the deadline is June 1st. Wanted to make you aware, as you know, sadly, this fall, a, one of our custodians at Auburn High School, a member of our team, Carl Renholm, passed away suddenly. And Donna Hydeman, a high school teacher, along with other members of the high school faculty, are working together to put in place a memorial, some sort of a remembrance for Carl. I think it speaks to our true family-like community that we have here. And it will be a fitting tribute. We'll keep you posted as plans continue on this. But what we're hoping to do is to plant a tree. They've got some plants that they want to. He was quite a gardener, and he had actually given away lots of cuttings from his plants. So, to get some of those back and actually do some landscaping around a tree to put that together. And it notes in here that Matthew Morrissey, who was a student at the high school under Mr. Bedard's care, will actually help design the memorial space. So, I think it's a great, a great honor in Carl's memory. The upcoming events, February Vacation Week is just around the corner. But when we return from that, the school building master plan team will meet on the 25th of February, followed by the school building committee meeting. And as you can see, the chorus concerts at the high school for the trimester two will take place on the 4th and 6th of March. And those always are outstanding. So, I encourage, if you're able to, to join us for any of those. That concludes my report.
Okay, now we'll go to business and financial report. Mr. Gray?
Mr. Chair, the first issue on the agenda is a statement of interest. I'd just like to inform the committee that we have... I'd just like to inform the committee that we have completed the online and submitted that to the MSBA. The follow-up is hard copies of millions of documents. The MSBA does not make this simple, so we have just received today the certified copies of the minutes from the Board of Selectmen. With tonight's action, we'll have the certified copies of the school committee's votes on that as well. And then the final piece of the puzzle will be to have the signatures of the chairperson of the school committee, the superintendent of schools, and the town manager all sign those hard copies, and as long as they're in the U.S. mail by Friday, February 14th, that should complete the process for the statement of interest. Any questions? Following that up, one of the things that the MSBA does require is, they require us to submit an MSBA closed school information report, which you have a copy of, I believe. That is the MSBA's way to ensure that not only have we not closed any schools, the process itself is that the MSBA is looking to see, number one, how a district is standing financially, and whether or not there's been any budget cuts, whether or not there's any reduction in staff, or whether or not we've closed any schools in order to stay within whatever the approved budget is by the town. Also, within that document, they also want to know if, over the next 10 years, if we anticipate potentially closing any schools. And as you are aware, there is a potential that we will be closing two of our elementary schools in 2015. So within this report, we must identify those schools and what the potential impact is. So, this report does require the school committee to approve it. It does not hold the district to closing those schools. I know you have not officially made a decision on that. Ultimately, what the MSBA is searching for is whether or not there's been any state funds invested in any potentially, at any potential schools that are closing in the future. They have within almost any document that you sign by the MSBA that they provided funding that, if a building has any state funds invested in it, and those funds were used, and there was a useful life attached to that, such as a roof, or a window, or a boiler, or a building of a school, if that school that's being closed has not exceeded its useful life, then the MSBA has the ability to recoup whatever remaining funds they feel are potentially invested within that building. So this report does highlight the fact that the potential schools that we may be closing in the future have never had any state or MSBA funding in it. So this is ultimately just to let the MSBA know that we have, at least on the table, some proposals into the next 10 years to potentially close, and then what our plans are to do with those schools, and how we want to continue to offer the educational opportunities within the Auburn school districts. So I'd ask if the school committee would entertain a motion to approve or close school information, so that we can submit that with a statement of interest.
I'll make that motion. What's that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Thank you very much. Next document are transfers. As always, there are two sets of transfers. One is for your information, the other one is for your approval. The first, for the informational part, as we continue to delve further into the fiscal year, we continue to make minor adjustments to different expenditures that we see that have had some changes throughout the year. On the ones for your information only, we have made some slight adjustments to different accounts in order to either reduce money that has been spent and return it to some of our revolving accounts, or to cover some costs that have occurred throughout the year. Does anybody have any questions on the informational transfers?
I have to refuse myself for some, one of these transfers. Can you tell me?
That's the next one. Yes.
Can I get a motion to, you need a motion to...
Not on this one. This is...
Informationally, yeah.
All right.
On the next one, these are...
Those are going to accuse herself.
These are transfers which occur across function codes, which require the school committee's approval. The first one is one that you have seen in the past, which is basically looking at some of our contractual obligations, and where we are able to, we are asking to shift money in order to replenish the circuit breaker account, which is our emergency funds for special education. This is something that we typically have done in the past. The next one is the one that Dr. Brunel and the We the People discussion was about. This is funds that would be taken from our printing supply line at the high school and putting it into competitions. Mr. Handfield reviewed his account, and the amount you see here is the difference between the $3,500 and what currently is in the current curriculum competitions that he felt he could support the We the People conference. So with this transfer, this would equate to the $3,500 that Dr. Brunel mentioned, that would be the $100 per 35 students that participate in the conference. And the last request to transfer for your approval is, as we progress further into our cold winter season, we've had a couple of heating adjustments that we'd like to recommend. That is to increase the budgets at Packerchog and Julia Bancroft in order to cover anticipated additional fuel costs. We've looked at all of our different lines and determined that the three lines that you see there are salaries that we have, for various reasons, will have some savings in, and felt they were appropriate in order to move, in order to cover the additional heating costs at Packerchog and Julia Bancroft.
I'll make the motion to approve the transfers as requested by the business manager.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed?
The next document we have before you is a new form that I've started to provide to our bond council, as well as to Mr. Kazanovich at Auburn Town Hall. One of the questions that has been raised is looking at cash flow and what costs have been submitted to the MSBA through the pro-pay system, how much the MSBA has paid, and when the payment dates occur. So, this document I present to you tonight is a reflection of costs that have been submitted through February 4th. It's a very detailed process. It requires that all the costs have been approved by the school building committee, and then in concert with the owner, project manager, we assign those costs to the appropriate budgets that have been approved by the MSBA. We have to provide documentation to all parties, showing that we've actually paid those funds, and then we submit all the hard paper documents to the MSBA. So, this is a reflection of what's been submitted and has been paid by the MSBA through February 4th through the pro-pay system. Does anybody have any questions? The next document is your year-to-date expenses. Once again, is a reflection of some of the transfers. Myself and the business staff, as well as Dr. Brunel, go very meticulously through these lines, and I'm happy to report that financially, we're in a very good position for February 7th. And I don't know if anybody has any particular questions, but I can state wholeheartedly that the district is in a very good financial place for this far into the fiscal year.
It's good to hear.
Always.
Any questions?
No. Okay. And then the last thing I just want to inform the school committee about is that the French River Education Collaborative has embarked on their very first natural gas bid. As you know, the French River Education Collaborative does bid out oil, and we were very fortunate to see it have a well-designed bid process, where our oil for next year came in much lower than we had anticipated. And because of the number of districts that have converted to natural gas, they have determined that they will go out and see as a group if we can get a much better natural gas price, and I would anticipate that hopefully, through that process, we will realize some additional savings by working collaboratively with the French River Education Collaborative. They have, I believe, just notified me that it'll be the last week of February after vacation, they'll have a bid information for the prospective bidders, and then they'll have a bid opening shortly thereafter, and I will report back to you on how that equates to what we had in our fiscal year 15 budget for natural gas prices when that comes available.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
There are two policies, and we're actually going to be bringing more to you as we go forward. As part of the middle school project and part of our mass chips, which got us extra two points for reimbursement, we have to be sure that there are certain policies we have in place. We looked through the idling policy as well as recycling. Both of these have been in place, but we've made some updates. To the first, the idling policy, these were based on recommendations from MASCE, and then the recycling policy was just to identify that it really, the recycling effort goes beyond teachers, to include custodians, teachers, and/or support staff, as well as students. So it is my recommendation that you approve both of those as amended.
I'll make the motion to approve the recommended updates to motor vehicle, no idling on school grounds policy number EEAJ, and recycling policy number EDE.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None.
Thank you. And that closes us, but we do need an executive session.
Need a motion going into executive session.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with regards to negotiations with the custodians and the business office.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Gibbons?
Yeah.
Mrs. Gibb?
Yes.
Mr. Stobbe?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.